All right, thank you guys for coming. My name is Jeff Redmond and I'm the President of Student Senate. We brought together a panel of Dining Services so that anybody and everybody can ask questions if they have any. I'm just gonna go through. We've got Mark and Nancy and Jason and Jay, John, and Claudia's in the back passing out some information, so if you have any additional questions, they should be able to look through the pamphlet. But I'm gonna let them go ahead and introduce themselves and then we can get started with the presentation.
Hello, I'm Nancy Whedon and I am the Food Court Supervisor and I have been here 20 years.
I'm Mark McCann, I'm the Executive Chef for Dining Services.
I'm Jason Arnett, I'm the Supervisor for the Coffee Bars.
I'm Jay Lattz, I'm Director of Dining Services.
I'm Claudia Martin-Ayewa and I'm the Dietitian for Dining Services.
John Bockert, I'm the Vending Supervisor.
All right, thank you guys. We're just gonna go ahead and let everybody start talking about the processes and procedure and maybe a little bit more about what you have going on and, you know, there's a whole under other side to Dining Services that maybe the students don't know about and we just wanted you to go ahead and elaborate on that so that we might be able to tell other people about it. We'll go ahead and start again from this side. You wanna start from this side? He looks ready to go.
Okay, like I said before, I'm John Bockert, I'm with the Vending. Some of the new stuff that we have in Vending is we're always trying to find new products. There's not always necessarily new products that come out. It's pretty much some of the same stuff that you've grown up comfortable with and things like that, but we look for different things that'll sell better and those kinds of things. Naturally, right now, there's a push to get some more healthy items. If you walk around campus, you'll notice on the machines, there's on every snack machine, there should be a sticker that lists Fit Pick items or doesn't list the items, but it mentions Fit Pick. And then there'll be stickers inside the machine and we're developing price tags that will actually stand out a little bit better than those stickers, so that way you can easily identify the items that meet the Fit Pick criteria. And we didn't just pick these items willy-nilly, we actually follow American Art Association guidelines for healthy alternatives in snack machines. Right now, our target goal for snack machines is to have about 20% of the items in the snack machines that meet the Fit Pick criteria, which is well above the purchase rate nationally for healthy items out of vending machines. Naturally, people don't generally go to vending machines looking for healthy items, but if we target putting about 20% mix of healthy items in the machine, then we're way above the purchase rate for those healthy items. Another new thing that we've been working on for a couple of years is credit card readers on the machines. We currently have about 23 soda machines and about 18 snack machines that have credit card readers on them. We are budgeted to put some more on this year and it'll probably take a couple more years yet before we're completely saturated with all the machines having credit card readers. And we'll continue to look for new technology, whether that's phone payment systems or different things like that. That's something that's probably gonna be coming in the next year or two as well, so constantly trying to stay, keep up with technology advances with the vending machines also and those kinds of things. So that's about kind of what's going on new with the vending machines.
From the nutrition point of view for Dining Services, we've, I've started here in September, so I've not been here that long, but trying to make a difference. And right now, we started initially, we're putting the nutrition information, we're trying to make that available for most of our locations and that's a process in and of itself. So right now, we have Pizza Hut, Chick-fil-A, and Sushi Gusto. Those nutrition information are available for you to pick up, you can take one with you, and they're available at the locations. We're working on the other ones as we go. We also have, we've been doing the Half Price Salad Bars on Fridays, for any of you who have checked that out, so every Friday, we have a Half Price Salad Bar. So that's kind of something, trying to get people to eat more fruits and veggies, so hopefully we'll make a difference there. We also, I also offer for any of you with specific diet issues, whether it's diabetic or cardiac or anything like that, if you have any special dietary needs, you can contact me and I can at least try to navigate around campus what it is that we have to offer and how you can at least eat while you are on campus. Also, we're working to add more fresh fruits to the coffee bars. That's something that we're working on. We also just recently reduced the sugar content in the lattes that we offer here, so that should make them a little bit more healthier. We also, there's a, how many of you guys know about our Dining Down Under? Because Dining Down Under, every day, we offer like a 500 calorie meal that's offered there every day, so if you're on a, you know, diet or you're watching weight or anything like that, then there's always a healthy option. There's a lot of different salads and stuff downstairs, but there's also one meal designated every day that's 500 calories or less. We also, we're looking at for, if, for people that are looking for nutrition, additional nutrition information, we also offer, or we're planning to offer nutrition events, like on, in the Food Court. Maybe once a month or something like that, we'll have something that's specific to a particular, maybe what's going on that month. If it's diabetes month or heart health month, we'll have some kind of event to tie into that and provide nutrition information about foods that ties into that particular theme for that month. So that's something that we have done, that's coming up. We also have our Lunch with the Chef series, that is, once a month. The next one is coming up February 17th, we'll have a Mardi Gras theme for that one. And so that's something that you guys can, every month, we'll have one and it'll be a different theme. We also will be doing, this coming Thursday, we will have a taste, a sampling for Chick-fil-A's new grilled chicken nuggets, and so we'll be doing some sampling in the Food Court, about 11 until 1:00, I think, on this coming Thursday. So that's something that you can check out as well. And as far as, that's all I have for right now. We just continue to strive to improve our offerings to you guys and, you know, we're happy and appreciate any input that we get from you. We do listen to our customers. Thank you.
Thanks Claudia. With the college's new wellness initiative, really excited to have Claudia on our staff as our Dietitian, something that we've needed for a long time, so she's really coming up with some great ideas to make our meals a lot more healthier. I think everybody's talking about what they're doing now, I guess I'll talk about what we're looking at in the future. Hopefully by fall semester, we're looking at sending a request for proposal out for either a national or regional sandwich brand, Subway, Jimmy John's, in the Food Court. It would go in the Areba location. That RFP will probably be going out, hopefully sometime in the next couple of months and as part of the committee, we'll probably want to have a student on the committee, so we'll reach out to the Student Senate to, you know, have somebody on that committee. The other idea, it's been pretty popular at other college campuses, are food trucks. We're looking at the possibility, let's say on the east side of campus, thinking about bringing in a food truck once or twice a week. There's several food trucks here in Kansas City. Again, we'll have to send out a request for proposal to see if there is any interest in something like that. I feel that part of campus, we don't have a lot of, you know, offerings, we have Cafe Tempo, but if we would bring in a food truck for, you know, two, three hours a day, I think that would be, that would be real neat. So that's kind of what we're looking at down the road. I handed out this customer satisfaction benchmarking survey. Just let you know, we participate in this survey every fall. It's a two-month process. It's with our National Association of College and University Food Services. As you can see, there's over 104 colleges and universities that participate in this every year, sometimes more, sometimes less, and roughly 96,000 submitted evaluations this year. We feel this is important to see how we're doing and if you have any questions about this, you can come and talk to me after, but we basically look at the Food Court, Down Under, Cafe Tempo, the C-Store Coffee Bars, and then we do, there's an all, overall evaluation. And generally, we have turned, you know, our scores are pretty good and satisfaction's relatively high, so. But again, after this meeting, if you wanna ask questions about this or ask questions after we go through our panel here, I'd be happy to answer them, so. Jason?
Hi, I'm Jason Arnett. I have been on campus since August of 2012. Was in catering for a couple of years and just last, end of October, 1st of November, I took over the coffee bars. So I've been looking at the operation there and seeing how things work and looking for ways that we can do things that are a little bit better, that we could, you know, improve our service and improve the flavor of the coffee and things like that. So our first step was really to go back to our partner, the Roastery, and find out how they do things and see how radically different they are from what we do. And we're pretty close, but we're working towards establishing that Roastery standard. So I think Claudia mentioned too, that we were cutting back the amount of sugar in some of the menu items, some of the, like the flavored lattes and things like that. I really don't think you'll notice much of a difference. It's just a little less sweet, but it's a whole big reduction in sugar for that, for those drinks, which is important, so. As well, adding the fresh fruit in, we've added some other pastry items, so yeah, you can take less sugar in your coffee, but you can eat more sugar if you want something sweet. We do have that, that option. We're not, we're just giving you options as to what you wanna, what you wanna eat and drink from the coffee bars. So be glad to answer any questions about coffee. I'm still learning about coffee, but it's a, it's a good time to be, to be in the business, so.
My area takes care of most of, most of the food production on campus. We do the food for the Down Under, for the Hot Buffet in the Food Court, for Areba, and then for all of the catering that happens around campus. In Down Under, we always have something that is vegetarian, we always have the 500 calorie or less diet, and most of the items we serve down there are, we will either have, we will always have a vegan or a vegetarian, and then many of the items we serve are gluten-free as well.
Almost everything's been covered. A lot of the items for the Food Court with Claudia's help have been identified better for everyone who needs to know about nutritional situations. We always, always are available for any special need to get you information. So if you come in to the Food Court and you see an item on the hot bar, but you want to find out if it's gluten-free or if it has sugar or salt, what the salt amount is in it, I can always call down to the kitchen and get those answers for you. If you have a very big health issue, always take the time to check in with me in the Food Court so that we can really monitor that for you and make sure that you don't get a salad with peanuts in it, or if you have a peanut allergy or whatever. Chick-fil-A has been really an excellent, healthy choice for us in the Food Court because of them doing the grilled chicken sandwich, doing the grilled chicken salad, and if you didn't know, we have grilled chicken wraps and we have chicken salad sandwiches now. So if you didn't notice those things, they're in the little cooler with the salad dressings right next to the window where you get the fries. And they're all excellent and they're very, very good choices, alternate choices if you haven't had them before. On the hot bar, we always try, as Mark was saying downstairs, to have a vegetarian dish, vegetables, rice on the sides, and a vegetarian soup. So whether you're going healthy or you really don't want meat in your items and chicken, we always have that available for you. Another thing is, I think a lot of times, students don't think they have really an important voice, but you do. If you and your friends are wanting a certain dish or wanting a certain item at one of the kiosks or downstairs, please bring in a little card with your desire on it and we'll see what we can do. We try to do some international dishes over the year. Our little, my assistant and head cashier in the Food Court, M., Geb Dao, from Thailand, actually did a meal with them downstairs in Dining Down Under with her recipe, with her instructions, and it was a winner. Everybody enjoyed it so much. We're gonna try to do those types of things through the year too for the Different Countries Fair. For those of you who are looking for price, price set things that will work for your financial situation, please come see myself or my assistant, M. We can always help you find things for under $5. A lot of the items hit five or six, but there are things you can still have for under $5 and we will certainly help you find those amounts. There's something even for $2, so just come see us if you're on a limited budget and we'll certainly help you find some items.
Thank you guys. We'll go ahead and open up the floor to questions right now. Anyone?
Oh, don't be shy, come on.
Hi.
Well, Nancy, we were just talking now about how students should feel free to come and see you guys and speak to you guys. I was just wondering if you have some kind of avenue for students to kind of communicate with you, without them like having to write it down, like so, almost like surveys in the Food Court, because as much as we're trying to be representative of the student body right now, it's only a small sample size. And I know a lot of students have ideas and maybe suggestions or even complaints or whatever it is about the Food Court. So is there any way that they can get that out to you guys, like while they're there?
I actually have a comment box that I can put on a table and put out with paper and pencils, so when you come in there, you can write that down. I'm always available to talk to also.
Yeah.
But that's kind of the best way. We have before done surveys, actually did a survey before we had sushi, to see if the students would want to have sushi. We didn't know how strong a desire that was on the campus and it was huge, so that caused us then to go ahead and make that decision and do, bring sushi on. We even had a contest on the Areba name and the ideas for the support we type kiosk that we have for students. I don't know that we have a specific student idea type survey.
Well, we're on, we're working on our marketing aspects. We want to open up as many avenues of communication as possible. How many of you would talk to us on Facebook or Twitter or something else like that? I mean, we're open to suggestions. So is Facebook good or is Twitter better, Instagram?
Twitter.
Twitter?
Twitter's quicker.
Twitter's quicker, okay. But if we had Facebook, you'd talk to us there too if you had a complaint, something that took more than 140 characters?
I got a couple of questions here on a card. Are there restrictions on what foods you can consider bringing in and adding to the menu?
Well, I know especially with a lot of national brands, some aren't available just because they don't see, you know, the college and university as a venue, you know, for their, for their concept. But we could probably be open to most, most ideas, even if, you know, if we had to do them, you know, and I'll give you an example, like Areba, you know, you know, that's kind of our brand and, you know, we developed it and, and, you know, definitely, you know, we can look at almost anything. You know, if we do a national sandwich brand in the Food Court, well, then that means in Down Under where we have our deli there, you know, we're gonna need to put something in there, you know, and we'd like to have suggestions on that because we're not, we're not sure what we would do. In fact, what was it I sent you, Claudia, from Iowa State? Yeah, and again, this is, we try to, you know, see what other colleges and universities are doing and they came up with a concept. What was that?
It was like a healthy choice. It's a concept where they have a station where they offer a lot more fruits and vegetables they have and they, the meal itself is specific to the size, the portion size, the official portion size that you're supposed to have, which is, you know, it's probably about yay big the plate. And that's actually what your portion size should be. And so the meal that they set up, the station they set up is specific to giving you the nutrition that you need, so you get your protein, you get your carb, and you get your fruits and veggies, but on the serving size that you're supposed to have. And it's a full, full meal. And they're saying that it's actually very popular, so it's a, it's a good thing and they price it accordingly.
So the answer is yes and no?
The only other restriction that we do have with beverages is that we are limited to only Pepsi products in the Dining Services locations and vending locations right now because of a contract that we have with Pepsi. And we still have another year on that contract before we, before we open that back up for bid process and things like that. The C-Store is not limited like we are, so they, they do carry a wider range of other products, but if you're in a Dining Services location or a vending location, then it will, with the exception of milk or coffee or something like that, it will only be a Pepsi product.
My only question, my question back to you, when you say restrictions, are you talking dietary restrictions? Are you talking, because quite frankly, we have more economical restrictions where our price point needs to be than what we have access to. For instance, we serve lamb in our catering functions. We'd never be able to serve lamb because of the cost in the Down Under or the Food Court, so.
And believe me, we'd love to have lamb for lunch, just like you guys.
Our restrictions are more, from my end of it, are more on the price point side than on what we can bring in, so.
Is there any new items that are being added? Obviously, you said sandwiches are being considered currently to the menu. Are there any that you're about to remove?
Not that I can think of. Do you guys? If we do bring in this sandwich comp, concept, excuse me, then we'd have to, we'd lose Areba and we would have to figure out something to put in the downstairs and the Boulevard Deli space, but Boulevard, the menus we immediately control are Cafe Tempo, Boulevard Burgers, Areba, and the Down Under. Boulevard Burgers and Areba are a fairly set menu. We do look at things and discuss what to do next with those venues at the end of each But it's, Down Under is a rotating menu, it changes daily. So like today, today I believe there's a hamburger steak with mushrooms, the vegetarian, I believe is a quiche usually on Mondays, and then tomorrow, it's something totally different, so. And that's on a four-week cycle.
And if we did get rid of Areba, again, I think we would probably incorporate, you know, a Mexican fare under the hot bar probably, you know, maybe once, twice a week, so we would definitely do something there.
It's not like there'd be a gap there.
Yeah.
Thank you. And the quiche is delicious, if you haven't tried it, by the way. Next question is, is there any way we can lower prices of the food so that students don't have to go perhaps across the street to Taco Bell just because it's cheaper? Obviously, economic restrictions in place, I know you're playing with, but I'll go ahead and let you answer that.
I think, you know, part of the marketing committee, we're looking at that in terms of, you know, maybe offering, you know, some value. We do have value and I think Nancy talked about that, you know, you get with Nancy, she can show you, you know, what kind of, you know, deals we do have. We do extensive, I guess we call it benchmarking yearly for all areas, and what that entails is, give an example, like Jason, he'll go out and he'll take, he'll look at, you know, three competitors, three or four competitors, and he just did that. And he picked up Starbucks.
And Scooters, and then I went to UMKC.
Yeah, yeah. And we looked at, we analyzed that, and we do that once, twice a year with all the areas and, because I guess where we want to be is maybe at or below what Starbucks is doing. So we do that. But I think as part of this marketing committee, you know, we're gonna, and I think I showed Jason an idea that KU was doing on their Tuesdays where they were doing corn dog or a hot dog for a dollar. And, and feature that, something, do something like that, but we'll definitely, we're gonna look at that.
And believe me, I mean, we would love to have lower prices too. I would say, and I do this in my own world, is I don't eat at Taco Bell because it's, the quality's not there. You know, I mean, the ground beef is not all ground beef, you know, and I'm not talking bad about Taco Bell in particular, it's all of them, you know? I mean, they have national buying power, they, some of them have world buying power, you know, makes it really cheap to buy. We're a lot smaller than McDonald's, you know, so think of it that way, that, you know, you're getting a much higher quality product, the highest quality product we can afford to give you. We use a lot of local stuff. The Roastery is local, you know, in terms of coffee beans. They travel the world looking for the best price on the beans and they're paying a fair price to the farmers that they harvest from. And then they pass as much of that savings on to us and we pass it on to you guys. We're not, we're not out to gouge anybody's pocketbook, so.
Thank you. Next question.
Well, first of all, I would like to actually compliment you on the Roastery considering it's actually a really good coffee. Comparing it with Starbucks, I think we're already there. The coffee is really, really good because I will actually choose to go here to the Roastery over Starbucks. One of the things for the sandwich bar, we do have great sandwiches in the Java Jazz Coffee Bar, which I think that would be, might be a great option to even extend that rather than bringing in a national brand, because the sandwiches are fairly healthy, I would think. It's a, it's a good chicken sandwich, it's got ciabatta bread, so it's, it might be an option of actually doing that. Would that be an option to choose over a Jimmy John's or a Subway rather than bringing them in?
I think if we did bring in a national brand, we would still have those sandwiches in the coffee bars, but that is something to look at. I know at KU, I'm gonna come back to KU because Jason and I both worked at KU, they developed their own sandwich brand down there. Again, in terms of the national or regional brand, you get a little more bang for your buck because of the recognition, you know? If you look at, if you look at our Food Court, what's number one, number two? I mean, it's Chick-fil-A, Pizza Hut, I mean, and the other, the other part of, and I didn't mention this, other part of this sandwich brand, either national or regional, we don't know, would be the delivery component to it, where they would deliver out of the Food Court throughout campus. You know, this, this whole app thing, it's just, I think, you know, it's another, you know, you know, avenue for growth for our operation because we are self-supporting, so. I don't know if I answered the question, but yeah, we, you know, there is possibly looking at our own sandwich brand too. You know, it's similar to what we did with Areba, you know, you just, you know, you develop your own brand.
Thank you. Follow-up to that, if we develop our own brand for that, would that also include the delivery component?
Probably have to look at that too, heck yeah.
That'd be amazing. Are there any other questions?
Hi, I'm Gion. Hi, I'm Gion. I'm a student and I employ at Food Court everywhere, all my bosses are in front of me. But yeah, I, when I came here, I saw Pizza Hut and Chick-fil-A. I don't know about Chick-fil-A at all, but I knew Pizza Hut, but I know what Jay talking about, the national brand. But I prefer to have a JCC brand, Food Court like Areba. I worked at Areba last semester and I really didn't like any Mexican food until then, but when I started working there and then had more chance to encounter the food, I started to compare the ingredient and how healthy. I started to compare the ingredient and the, how healthy of the Areba food compared to Blue Butter Burger or Chick-fil-A and Pizza Hut, Pizza Hut, because most of the ingredient in Areba is more, more likely, less processed and healthy and fresh. That's why I became love that menu in Areba. So when we, when we invite a national brand, we might sell it cheaper than, than our own brand, but it might, we have to compromise our nutritional value over the price. I think as a college, we have to look forward to more modern way, not to compromising the national big corporate corporation, but more likely building our own brand, even though it will not be famous in the first. I think it will go to the goal to maybe our college student population increased more healthy and more fresh ingredient. And then I really not happy about closing Areba, if we are considering about it.
Well, again, if, if we did send a request for a proposal, RFP, out, as one of the criteria, you know, the healthy component would probably be in that, you know, request in terms of how we judge, you know, whoever we put in there. So I mean, that's something we can definitely consider.
So another thing, when I see the Down Under sign, I have been here, it's my fourth semester and worked at Food Court, it's my third semester working there. But I didn't really notice about what is Down Under until I started working in the kitchen. Know that it was a food. It's so good and healthy food, the choices are there. But it is not visible as like when you say deli or some deep maybe natural food court like this, it doesn't show that it is a place to can, we can eat. So maybe we can, I didn't even, didn't even realize that we have a deli in Down Under because I hardly go down to there to eat because of the price for myself. But I think the, I like the food choices it there, but I think it is more, you have to more appealing name or other way to commercialize or let, let students or our customers to know what it is, what is it there.
And I think that's part of our marketing committee. I think we've discussed that, so.
We're, we're kinda looking at everything as much as we can. So I appreciate the comments. That's helpful.
I want to my Food Court for a bit more. And last comment I have is, as an employee and as a customer, I noticed that our hot bar and salad bar is okay, but hot bar usually we have constantly changing menus. And I think Claudia mentioned there's some students or customers have some healthy issue or personal issue, they cannot eat, consume certain calories or certain kind of food. But maybe I thought whether, instead of asking someone what is in there, maybe we have a little screen right by the hot bar or somewhere in the Food Court to show the days of menu and ingredients or calories. So at, at least, no one has to ask around or what is in there. So it will be less, I think it more informable and more clear to, between us. So we don't have to ask or we don't have to start figuring out.
We've, we've had conversations with Jay about several things.
And as a matter of fact, that's something that we actually were talking about this week because I found we're gonna have to figure out who, who we can get to make the cards. But we've ident, have identified a, a card that we can use that's, what do you call it, erasable, that we can use for that very purpose. We discussed that last week. And so it will, it will have the, the eight major allergens at the bottom, so we can circle if the food includes seafood or dairy or something like that, and then we can write the calorie. And it was the name of the dish and the calorie, and then if it, if it includes any of those allergen products. But it's, we identified what we wanted to look like. Now we just have to find somebody to get it custom made. So that was discussed last week, so we're kinda, we're working on that one.
All right, thank you.
Through our inner club and Activities Council, we've had some clubs talk about catering prices. And I know a few years back when we sat down with you for catering prices, it, at that point, covered the whole menu. And it now only covers a very restrictive menu as well as sometimes prices are changed and we may not know about those pricing changes from anywhere from a week or two. But one time it was about eight months before we were aware of pricing changes. So the clubs have asked if I could bring that issue up. Is there a way to open up the availability of things that are available for that reduced price for clubs and organizations? And then, of course, be more consistently notified when there are price changes. I don't think they, well, they care a little bit that the prices are raised. They just wanna know when they're raised.
I think on that clubs and organization menu, and again, it's very limited, and I think I will talk to Sherri and should Sherri get with you, Mindy, about expanding that. We did not raise the prices on that clubs and organization, I don't think. Did we? Okay, okay, okay. Did I, okay, okay, okay. Well, let me get with Sherri. She's, she's off today. And we'll, we'll look at, you know, the communicating that to you, you know, you know, when we make the changes. 'Cause the last time we made a change to our catering menu was last January. I don't think we're gonna be going up anytime soon. But let me, let me get with, with Sherri and I'll have her get with you and we'll look at expanding that. And I think the other thing too is, please work with us. If you got events and I think we can get creative, it doesn't have to necessarily come off the menu, but we can get creative, so. But I'll have Sherri get with you.
Right, thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, we just wanted to thank you guys for coming by.
Thank you.
This is great for you to be able to come and talk with the other students about what's going on. We've got someone who wants to make a comment.
I don't have a question, but what I wanna say is like my first on-campus job was on dining services. I'm so thankful for you guys. It's been wonderful, the experience that I had in Food Court. I think I'll never forget that. Thank you, Nancy. Love you. Yeah, that's all I wanna say, how thankful I am, and you guys are doing a great job giving opportunity for international students to work, 'cause we know that how hard it is for international students to get on-campus job and they can work outside. So I think like Food Court was my first place and where I met so many people. And it's really nice and people in dining services are really good and friendly. So it's just, I, I think I owe you a thank, so.
Thank you.
Let me, let me ask one question to you guys before we go. What matters most to you? Is it price? Is it choice? Is it healthy? It's quality, first thing?
It's quality and, and options, I would say, for, for myself personally because of, I don't choose to dine with the free options that we have on campus too often considering that, that nutritional content with the, the information is just lacking.
Okay.
So I, I want to bring food to campus. But if I don't, then I'll actually go, go for like a sandwich or a Chick-fil-A grilled sandwich, because I know it's a healthier option.
Okay.
That's simply because I, I feel drained energy, I know the food options. So having nutritious food and healthy options.
Okay. Is, is price a factor in that too?
It is, however, I do, for, for my personal health choices, definitely something that I choose to maybe pay a dollar more.
Okay.
However, I know it's good for.
Okay. Well, like I said, we're not trying to gouge you. We, you know, we, we gotta pay all the students that work for us. So we're, we're doing our best. Thank you. Please, please stay in touch with us, okay?
I would say price can get back to us because it's not necessarily like it's outrageous or anything. But you know, being on campus five days a week, having a break where you're like, well, this is my only time to eat. I can probably eat, I don't have time to tackle this morning. Have to eat every day. It can get a little pricey.
Yeah.
Basically, I would say it's, it's worth the quality, like you said, if, you know, you're not getting Taco Bell and you're getting real meat.
Right, yeah.
Chick-fil-A is one of the better fast food so-called restaurants. And I would just say, maybe if there's a way that you could see the better pricing options, instead of like having a board that's like, this is our $5 special today, or whatever it is gonna be, instead of having to go and find Nancy and be like, hey, what can I afford today? Maybe if there's like one option that's like, let's, like, oh, there's a $5 combo today or $3, $1 hot dog or something. So I think that would be the best.
Are you aware that we have loyalty cards in the coffee bars, that for every 10 drinks you buy?
Yeah, I, I have one actually. I do.
All right, thank you. Are there any other comments, questions? Thank you, guys, again, for coming by, and let's give them a round of applause for coming by.